Welcome to the March 3 Planning Board Meeting. We'll begin with roll call. We may have a couple of late attendees, but we are expecting all but one of our members. So I will call roll. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Delio. Not yet. Anne Gardner will not be here. Tanya Hartford. Not yet. Leah McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Yeah.
Bonnie Sontag here and Linda Guthrie, our note taker along with Director of Planning Development, Andy Port and Planner Caitlin Sullivan. Let me go through the agenda. Request for minor modification at 16 Duffy Drive is not a public hearing. Then there's approval of our minutes from our last meeting. Updates on our planning agenda for the year and then other updates from the Planning Director. A topic entitled Origins of Zoning Amendments and then a separate item Plum Island Overlay District Zoning and Development Permitting and any other updates from anyone before we adjourn. So we'll get started with the first and only item of business tonight, which is a minor modification request at 16 Duffy Drive. And I believe the homeowners are here to walk us through this possibly with the help of Andy who will display whatever is needed to be displayed.
Hi Scott. Hi Scott and Laurie, are you there?
Yes.
Hey, yes, Andy, I'm here. Can you pull up, pull up the drawings that we submitted? There we go. Well, good evening. Scott Brown, I'm the architect representing Brian and Lori Keefe, the owners of 16 Duffy Drive, which is part of the Port Place or Evergreens Commons subdivision. So fortunately, we're very close to nearing the end of this project. I believe there's only one lot available and I for one am really looking forward to putting this project in the rearview mirror because it's darn near killed me. But that being said, we are approaching the point where, you know, some of these homeowners have been in these houses for a few years. Keefe's have owned this for approximately about a year and a half. And what we are having now is we're having some folks that want to make tweaks to what they have. So the Keefe's have discovered that this, you know, sort of three bedroom house is perhaps not the best fit for their five person family. So they came to me with a request to add an additional bedroom above the garage. So this is, you know, what we've been calling a Chatham unit. It is not a unit where we have added a bonus room above the garage. We've done this to a number of units, unit types throughout the subdivision, but never to this one simply because no one, no one has requested it. So, you know, this is, you know, a renovation. It's like a retrofit, you know, application. And it's been a little bit challenging because it has not been particularly set up from a structural standpoint to accommodate this. So the design of this is different from anything else that we've done. Not, not necessarily what we're doing above the garage, but this gambrel shaped roof line is, is a little unique in terms of the overall units in the subdivision. And Brian and Lori came to me and they really wanted to mimic sort of the gambrel kind of roof type above the garage. So, you know, that's what we've done here and it seems like sort of a natural fit for, you know, adding some additional space above the garage. So on this sheet, you know, of course, on the, on the top there, we're showing the existing front elevation. You know, below is the proposed front of elevation with bubbled the area of alterations. And if you could please go to the next sheet. So next sheet shows, you know, basically what the existing left side is, what the proposed left side is, you know, area of alterations that we've bubbled. And I believe this is actually the first time that, you know, this board has seen anything other than a front elevation for this project. Next sheet, Andy. And, you know, finally, the rear elevation, you know, proposed existing and finally the last sheet. The last sheet here, if you just zoom out a little bit, just showing what the, you know, footprint is now, what the new proposed footprint is, you know, we're only making, we're not doing a, there's no change to the existing first floor footprint. All the changes are happening at the second floor and we are adding about a little less than 25 square feet. That's shaded there and that'll be cantilevered out of the first floor. So there's no, no additional foundation work. So, you know, in short, in closing, this is, you know, something we've done with a lot of unit types. We've added, you know, probably a dozen, dozen or so houses that have additional bonus rooms above the garage and throughout the subdivision. And this is really no different from that. And, you know, I would like to basically, you know, I think this is a minor modification and, you know, with that, you know, would be happy to answer your questions.
Board members, any questions? I have a question relating to the condition on garages. And I'm wondering how far out this, is there a protrusion on this garage any more than what is there now? It looks like the, I don't know if the gambrel roof makes it come out. And the reason I'm asking is the condition reads garages, whether attached to the residential unit or detached, shall be placed so that they are recessed at least five feet from the front building wall of the house.
Yeah, good, good question, Andy. Can we just, you know, toggle forward to the footprint? Yeah, I don't have the dimension, you know, off the, off the top of my head, but that dormer is no farther forward. In fact, we pulled it, pulled it, you know, back from that face of that garage at least a foot because that improves the appearance of it. So we're not changing anything to what's there in terms of the face of that relative to the front of the house. And I do believe that the delta between that front of that house and that face of that garage is, you know, is greater than five feet.
So what is this additional footprint? It sounded like something you said was like a balcony or is it part of the design?
Yeah, if you just go to the rear elevation, Andy, I think it's on A3.
So that's at the rear?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. So that's, that's not an issue because we're talking about the front with my question.
Right. And here you can see, see where that little, there's like a little six over one window there in a recess and, you know, so that is in a plane that is set back from that right rear wall of the garage. So this dormer above is, you know, more or less in the same plane of the garage. That little interstitial area that is recessed. And, you know, we had to do this because again, this is not a unit that was set up to connect these two. So, you know, we really need, this is the only place that we can kind of create a hall on the second floor. So we had to, you know, essentially cantilever out the second floor over that area. But really, so the only change in, yeah, the only change in plane is happening on the rear of the house, not, not the front.
Okay, that was my question and that's the answer. Thank you. All right. Um, well, if, if really nobody has anything they want to question this on this.
This is Andy Port. I just wanted to note that Beth Delio is with us now. I also wanted to note for the record that the Office of Planning and Development has no objection to the application. We see it as a minor change. It doesn't increase the, the ground level footprint in any way. And it doesn't raise any concerns relative to water supply or anything like that. So the office has no objection to the application, recommends approval.
Andy, I'm here too. This is Tanya.
Oh, good. Thank you.
Apologies. Yes, thank you.
I did have a question on this particular sheet. And it doesn't really have anything to do with the addition, but why did the stairs flip in direction, Scott? The basement or lower level stairs?
Yeah, that's a, actually that's, that is actually what we're showing there is a step footing. And that is a mistake in the drawing above, you know, so it should actually show what, you know, it should look identical to what we're showing below.
Okay.
That's simply because, you know, the garage, the step footing is that the footing for a garage isn't as deep as the rest of the house.
But I know, I noticed on the, on the front elevation, they were in the same direction. So I wasn't really sure why it flipped.
Simply a mistake on our part.
Okay. And I will take a motion that includes a request for minor modification and approval as drafted in the staff report. Who would like to make the motion, please?
I will. Rick.
Do it.
I, well, I don't have it in front of me, but I made the motion as, to, to make the approvals as stated in the staff report.
Thank you. Second?
A second, Alden.
Okay. And I will take roll call. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah? Una, are you there?
Yes, yes, yes.
I knew if I called her, you'd come. Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie? Yes. So you are approved. Good work, Scott, and congratulations, Keefe's.
Great. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you. All right. Approval of minutes for our last meeting, February 17th. I'll take a motion to approve.
I will make that motion to approve the minutes.
Could I have a second?
I'll second, Beth.
Thanks, Beth. Any discussion? Nothing major. Okay. And the recording is really helping when we do get stuck on a few items that are not significant, but we want to make sure they're right. Just for the record, we are using those recordings. Okay, we'll take roll on approval of the minutes. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
I'm staying.
Thank you. Bonnie, yes. 2021 planning updates. Any of the leads or anyone else have anything to say about any work that's going forward?
I will. I have two things that I'm somewhat responsible for and I have done nothing on the second one, which is the site plan standards and so forth. But with respect to Story Avenue, I have been gathering some information and, you know, some mapping, some sample ordinances and, and so forth and put them into a folder, which I have shared with Alden and MJ. I've had a couple of discussions and I, my plan currently is to ask the team to go through parcel, the different parcels, identify which parcels have some capacity for redevelopment or expansion, which ones really don't. There's a lot of, a lot of the small parcels right on the street that are, are very limited in what can happen there. But to look at those opportunities and then I would think in a couple of weeks, put, pull together a meeting of the group to kind of share our findings with each other and really try to aim toward having something as a draft by our June meeting. And then see where we go from there. It may be that we want to have some type of discussions with the key property owners in the area and so forth. I also did a, in addition to gathering information and, you know, resource information, I kind of did a, a data dump from my head of, of all the ideas that I could think that might, might relate to this. So mapping potential, goals from the master plan, different ways we could look at zoning, what the constraints were. We've got a state highway, we've got an established pattern, ownership is an issue. And your public infrastructure is an issue and identifying stakeholders. So I've been trying to do, you know, it's brainstorming with myself at this point, but I think the next step is to get together the three of us and have a meeting and brainstorm together to get to the next stage of this.
So I have a question. You said you thought you might have a draft ready by the June meeting. You're thinking of actually drafting zoning or a draft sort of report on all the things that would be included in the zoning?
I think more of a draft report of the things that might be included in the zoning. I mean, there's not a lot to do with the zoning because, I mean, I think the key thing is, is changing the zoning to allow mixed use by, as a right perhaps, but, or, or special permit, depending how we, we, we look at that. But it's really a matter of figuring out who we have to talk to as a group, you know, coming up with the goals and strategies, initial goals and strategies. And, you know, then coming up with a, a public process afterwards. Because until we actually talk to people, it's all theoretical. So, you know, there's, there's, there's the outline guidance in the master plan. I think we can refine that a little bit further. We can identify some things that might make sense. But I think that until we actually talk to property owners and so forth, to understand what their constraints are and what their goals are, frankly. You know, we can come up with zoning and if they're not interested in implementing it, we haven't, you know, achieved anything. So I think that's, that's the direction I'm thinking of.
I was hoping that's what you were going to say. Good. Okay. Design standards. Lee, you want to talk about our one phone call? And I don't know if you've talked to MJ at all about it. You're muted. Leah?
Sorry. Yeah, I mean, I don't know that we have too much to say. I mean, I, just Bonnie and, Bonnie and I just wanted to have a general conversation about what does it mean to create design standards for the whole, you know, in, in essence, what we talked about was for the whole town and, and trying to identify different neighborhoods and understanding what the, sort of the, the design standards could potentially be for, for, for various neighborhoods. And then we talked about, well, how would this even look if we were to try and get this, something like this, these standards passed? What would be the process? It was a very initial conversation just to see what, what the issues are really involved and what it means to, about design standards for the, for the town in general. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Bonnie?
Well, only that I thought I would write up some of the stuff that I have found because I had plowed through the, sorry, that's probably not the right term, but it's the way it felt, the master plan. Looking for references because you had asked me, you know, why is this, you know, such a big deal? Because we've never really done anything with it in the past and it was put into this master plan. So I think I still need to do a little bit of homework and draft that up and share it with you and MJ. Not just on the master plan, but it turns out I've been collecting bits and pieces over the years. And I just wanted to put that all in one place. Plus, Rick gave us a huge number of
Huge number.
examples from other communities and, you know, I'm not going to wait to look at that, but that's on my to-do list just to see if, but if we have a sort of a starting list of things to look at, then it helps us guide our, our research. And I think one of the things we sort of agreed to, but it's only very preliminarily, is that we'd focus on a subset of the national, how do you say that? National Register Historic District. Is that in itself has 2,200 structures, contributing structures? And that's crazy to try to handle from the city line with Newbury all the way up to almost Atkins and Common and High and Water. So I think we really do, one, I, I think it's going to make a difference where we focus our thinking about the possibility of doing this and in terms of how we do our research. Because if there's, you know, a lot of historic densely populated streets, then that's going to look different than if we talk about, I don't know, farther up in the North End. So I think we've got to get clear on where we want to focus before we even go as far as doing some research.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to get clear on what the, what the objective is ultimately.
Yeah. And so that, I wanted to draft up the notes from that talk because I think I've got some stuff in there.
Yeah.
That might help us. And then bring MJ into the loop as well. We should have had a three-way phone call. We just didn't do it. Sorry, MJ.
It was actually just a very preliminary conversation.
Yeah, it's fine. Can I just ask a question though? And maybe it's for Bonnie and Andy. I mean, through the zoning advisory committee, you know, we discussed some of this, creating standards and having a design kind of a booklet even. I don't know where that went though.
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Yep. So it was one of the issues that came up during the zoning rewrite. The, the budget for the zoning rewrite didn't include enough to have the consultant take on that task. We did discuss the possibility of adding to the budget to have that component added, but there haven't yet been any monies appropriated by the city council. So I did, you know, in terms of the zoning project and the master plan, in both instances, we got less than we originally requested. So we decided that would be something we would phase in, you know, at a later point when there's support for the funding necessary to do it. There is the possibility always in planning offices of trying to draft out something internally. The problem is that our staff is often very busy. But there was agreement that that was something that the, a gap that needed to be filled. And the demolition, so the downtown overlay district, it covers the downtown, of course, but the demolition control overlay district, which covers the vast, you know, substantial area of the city where there's these historic structures, the National Register Historic District, they're, they're the same outer boundaries. That provides one level of protection, but it, to the discussion you're just having, it doesn't really cover design standards. It really triggers different types of review. And it, and it, you know, in, for the most part protects the structures that are there from being demolished, but it doesn't really have a design standards per se. And it's one of those things that I do think would make sense. I think that there are certain architectural styles in the city and it's possible to, you know, reinforce some of the, you know, that character by making, you know, the appropriate references and new architecture that's added, for instance, to those. But there's, there's different ways of accomplishing design standards. I think there has to be to the, the board's, you know, discussions about this and ours as a staff. It comes, it all comes down to, at the end of the day, what is there, what level of detail is there some political support for? Because on that one, it's, it's still a two-thirds vote for zoning. So the local historic district, you know, was, was maybe too much and didn't get passed, you know, years back. So maybe something at a lower level, but maybe not quite as intense. Or as I think Bonnie pointed out, covering a certain subsection of the area of the city, the way that the Fruit Street District does, perhaps something larger, not taking on the whole National Register District or Demolition Control Overlay District at the same, at one once. But in either case, I definitely think it's a gap that needs to be filled, at least to ensure some sort of compatibility and it would provide better use for the ZBA in particular because they deal with the residential projects, you know, in a way that the planning board doesn't. So those are my thoughts on that. If you want me to expand, I'm happy to.
Yeah.
Hey, Bonnie, can I, oh, sorry, this is Tanya. Can I just jump in and say, if it's a funding issue, there are, there are funds that you could apply for, Andy, that would pay for this. I know that in Salem, when we did our design guidelines, we used historic funds so that, and that paid for the design guidelines and you can, you could probably find the design guidelines. I think they're still on the Salem's website. And then there's also the Mass Downtown Initiative. Through DHGD, they also, they, they also have annual funding rounds where you can do design.
Yeah. Andy, I'm aware of the sources and we do pursue all those grants. We're not unawares. We have a grant writer who helps us with that. The problem is certain things aren't, aren't applicable. So for instance, the Downtown Initiative, they wouldn't be really helping us out with what I think is the more substantial area that needs to be covered in the existing regulations, which is the DCO, the Demolition Control Overlay District. That's residential. So they're not going to help us out with that, for instance. So there's certain programs that are accessible to us. Sometimes we get the funds, sometimes we don't. We definitely pursue these funds and I definitely agree with you. We should go after them.
You also just, you also just, Andy, you just have to be, I mean, I think, I think, well, it only would be for the downtown. I think you could be creative and, and making it last forever. I mean, we didn't, we didn't really intend ours to be just for, for historic, but that was where we had the money. So that was how we sort of channeled it. So I just, I just think you just need to be a little bit more creative. Funding is an issue. That's just, that's just, I feel like that's one thing you can handle.
But I don't think it's an issue right now. So I want to remind everybody, this is just a feasibility study for now until June to see if, where, what, how do we really want to do this? So sure, at some point when we decide on all of that, we'd go after funding for it because it's not something we want to do in-house. So that would be the next step after we decide that we really want to do it and where. But that's great to know that, you know, everybody's on board with the idea, at least, that we could go for funding if we needed it. But that's not going to be part of this first phase of work.
Yeah, this is Andy. Could I make one more suggestion?
Sure.
It might be possible for us, we could talk with the Community Preservation Committee. But, you know, that's something that again, just because sometimes we're not able to obtain, you know, state funds for one reason or another, that, you know, again, if there's local support for something like that, we could perhaps talk about a preservation committee application for the next round that would fund the consultant work to help us develop draft design guidelines that could then be, you know, brought forward for adoption if we're comfortable. Because that, that's a local source of funds that I think, you know, that's certainly a method of protecting those historic structures better. So.
Yeah. And that wouldn't be until this time next year. So by then we'd certainly know what we wanted if we were going to go forward with it.
Yeah, I'm happy to draft an application or scope of work for that if, if you want to work in conjunction on that or otherwise.
Okay. Well, let's get through the feasibility phase first and then we'll get back to you on that. Tanya and Beth, have you had a chance to look at or even think about, or do you know when you're going to? Do anything on policies and procedures?
No, we haven't gotten together.
Okay. And Don, do you know anything about, have you and Anne talked anything about inclusionary zoning yet?
No.
Okay. All right. June 16th isn't exactly around the corner, but just keeping our eye on the ball. We had a little extra time tonight, so I thought I'd check in. Just to check in, it's great. Thank you. And we'll move on to the next topic, which is Andy's.
Thank you. Yeah. So just a couple of updates. Two things that I thought were worth the planning board's consideration, maybe a quick conversation about just so you're aware of, you know, some background and you can consider what role the planning board might want to take on certain issues moving forward. One was in a recent discussion about a zoning amendment, which I'll explain in a second. It's actually the, the second one, Plum Island Overlay District. The, there was discussion at one of the council meetings and this, I raised this because the planning board has a key role in, under the state statute and in the local zoning ordinance in the process for adopting ordinances and, and even in on providing feedback of an advisory board to the city council on the adoption of zoning regulations, land use regulations. So the reason I say that is because of the last council meeting about that particular zoning change, there was a suggestion in there at one point of, or, and a question that I've heard echoed since then on one, one instance about whether or not the planning board or perhaps the planning office, but in particular, I heard the reference to the planning board should be the entity that zoning changes potentially come from. I think, and I know Rick, I don't know if you could speak to this as well. I know you're, you've long been a planner professionally and as a consultant in this municipality. But to me, clearly in Massachusetts, there's a statutory role for the planning board in making recommendations on zoning changes. And I also think that just as a board that deals with the zoning provisions themselves in terms of permitting, that that's appropriate. And as I would think, it would be appropriate for the zoning board of appeals if they felt that something needed to be addressed. But I, I think just because of the statutory references, the references in the adoption section of our zoning ordinance, the, it's clear that the planning board has a key role with that. I just wanted to make it clear that I, I do think that's an important role for this board, you know, and for our office, of course. And I don't think that the proposals for zoning should be, you know, originating only in the council because I think that there is a diversity of understanding of land use issues amongst the Historic Commission, the Land use issues amongst the historic commission, the planning board, the conservation commission, et cetera. That was the first bullet. I don't know if anybody wanted to speak to that at all, or just maybe go to the next bullet.
So Andy, just to follow up on that. And my experience has, has been, you know, having planning boards. Primary planning boards, maybe sometimes zoning boards, but primarily is planning boards submit. Proposed zoning amendments. Granted, my experience has been mostly in towns with town meetings, so it's a very different structure. But do you think that if the planning board were to submit? A proposed zoning amendment? That. How do you think the public participation process, do you think that it would still go the same way where the planning board would submit it to the city council? The city council would turn around and send it to planning and development, and then planning development would come back to planning board and have a joint public hearing that way? Or do you think that there would be? If the planning board were actually involved in developing the, the proposed zoning, do you think there should be? An earlier public hearing process? Just, just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
When you say earlier public hearing process, I'm not quite sure you mean by that.
As well as the planning board should solicit. Input from members of the public from resident and so forth.
Ah, yeah.
To the city council.
Sure. Now, that's a great question. I think that probably depends on the, the type of amendment maybe being discussed. You know, for instance, the. I, you know, the sixty is, you know, maybe a different creature, but some ordinance amendments are relatively minor, sort of housekeeping type things, and other ones are more substantive. So I guess it depends on. You know, it's sort of, it's sort of a balance, really, you know, our sense of the community, our sense of. You know, how big is the issue that's being changed in the regulations or what issue, the scope of the issue being addressed? I do think that it makes sense that regardless of whether the amendments come from the city council or the planning board or some other source that. That we follow the, the, the same process that's clearly outlined in our ordinance, but that's, you know, for the, the city council and the planning board to have a joint meeting. I've worked in towns before and that, and I've seen that instance in which the planning board has a totally separate public hearing. And I realize that that can have, you know, some benefits or make it more efficient, maybe in terms of scheduling meetings, but. You know, we have a 20-member meeting when, if we have all of our city council members, which is 11, and all of our planning board members, nine. So those are pretty big meetings, you know, easier to do during COVID, but you know, before that, that's just getting in a room. With the public on a controversial amendment, you know, can have a big turnout. So. At any rate, I do think that it's good that in Newbury Port, which is, is not always the case in other communities, has the provision that requires them, them to. The city council and planning board to hold a joint hearing. And I think that makes sure that there's a good dialogue back and forth and, and I, but I do think it's very important for. The planning board to recommend changes where it feels necessary, like the, the sixty amendment that's been submitted recently. There is, clearly the city council has a, an ordinance here locally that says that nothing goes, another ordinance has moved forward on their docket unless they have a sponsor. And that's where I, that's where partly this issue came up is there was a questioning of whether or not that essentially over at the state law, you know. Providing where zoning ordinances can, can originate. So I, I'm pretty clear where I fall on that interpretation, but, but the bottom line, I guess, is I think it is important for. The planning board to recommend changes where it's needed, just as recently the conservation commission has affected, effectively made a recommendation for change their regulations. I think that. We have a charter review committee, we have a city ordinances review committee. And we all, you know, collectively need to continue to comb through the regulations and provide updates where we can. I will say with zoning ordinances, there typically is a longer lead time to get adoption of something that's, you know, maybe more substantive, but. And that's just partly because of the procedures are more onerous than a general ordinance. But, but you know, we should all be pursuing that where we see a gap in something that we think needs to be filled.
And just one quick follow-up on that. Do you have anything, as you're thinking about zoning changes, are you thinking about bringing anything to the? Planning board to ask us to sponsor it? Are you still going ahead with the same process you've been going and going to try to find a city council sponsor to, to start the process?
Yeah, actually, so that a little bit depends on the, the issue. What I want to do is have the, another grouping of the zoning advisory committee this month to talk about, to get that group back together again, pick up where we left off with some of the rewrite items. And some of this discussion here about where we are at this present time, what issues might need to be addressed. And bring forward some pieces of that. We, we have a balancing act because we have limited staff time, how many boards and committees and the overlap between them, we can, you know, sort of coordinate. Because when there are a lot of cooks in the kitchen, it becomes hard to reach a final document. So we believe it's important to focus on, you know, one section or one chunk at a time, so that we can accomplish that and get that done. Rather than essentially all of us spreading ourselves too thin, thinking we're going to accomplish, you know, you know, the entire zoning ordinance at once, which I don't think was. Realistically feasible. We, we've spent the, the better part of a year on short-term rental units. We spent a year or two on marijuana. Uses, so it's not, you know, there's some things that are complicated and it's easier to break them off. So. March, we're submitting a, by the end of this month, a housekeeping amendment. To deal with some, really just clean up language issues. And Jennifer and I have talked, our zoning administrator. And I have talked about breaking those off so that they're, they're just simple housekeeping items. That will help to address some sort of clarification issues, essentially the ordinance, but not substantive changes. And, and we want to get those cleaned up. Then what I'd like to do is focus on the more substantive things and other sections that we haven't covered from the rewrite. You know, I do think, as I've, as it's mentioned on the agenda tonight, that the Plum Island Overlay District is something that needs to be looked at. And we can talk about that, you know, further. That is a substantive, long-term planning issue. If there's, if there ever was one for Newbury Port. That is, is the substance of land use planning issue that the city, I think, needs to take a look at in the, in the near or long term. But there are lots of other issues that we can clean up in the ordinance or provide greater clarification on, like the design guidelines that you've been talking about. You know, that's again, can we fill a further gap in the regulations in Newbury Port? Because. There wasn't an LHD, but there was a demolition control overlay district adopted to reduce demolitions of those historic structures and preserve them better. At least, but there's nothing that speaks to what the design standards might be for something that's added or modified. In there. So, so that's maybe a gap that could be filled if there's, if there is agreement at the end of the day. By a two-thirds vote of the city council on whatever those standards are. So I recommend that we, we all, you know, where, where possible, work on. You know, a section at a time and try to bring those pieces forward. But what I'd like to do is get that housekeeping piece in. I don't know, I'm not sure, you know, how many substantive things are going to be dealt with during the next, you know, six months to nine months or a year, frankly. As a zoning amendments from the city council, I think the one that might have that possibility is short-term rental units, because there has been. Some discussion about that over the last year. But I don't, I'm not convinced that there'll be large substantive changes brought to the council, probably more language cleanup type issues, filling some holes. And I think say that partly because there has been some questioning by members of the council about. Whether it makes sense to have substantive changes done during remote meetings where. Perhaps attendance, attendance in a physical meeting is preferable for public input. So, so I think that's, that's a question as well. And so my thinking is that it's more likely that. In terms of sponsorship or support for moving something substantive, you know, large substance of forward. That that'll, they'll probably months, you know, six months, nine months, a year before anything like that is brought forward. And I think diploma. And this is change is also isn't that category of things that there, there isn't probably the palette to deal with that right at this moment. But, but I do think it's a long-term issue that the city needs to address. So, so there's other sections we can talk about, but. I think that, you know, Rick's work on the site plan section will be helpful, putting, you know, as each of us work on different pieces with our available time. We can add more details to things that are missing or clarify some language that is maybe inadequate today.
So let me try building on what both of you said from this idea of where the zoning amendment originates. It might be advisable, and of course. It's more for when we get back into normal face-to-face meetings. But it may, might be advisable if we see a gap, as Andy calls it, or it's one of the things on our planning list that we would like. To turn into a zoning amendment. That we do work on it. And bring in. A counselor or two who we foresee could be the sponsor before we're ready. Before we finalize the draft. In other words, bring in a Heather or. A Barry or a Jared or somebody who we think would be a good sponsor and would be willing to. Work with us or at least understand what we're doing during the process of drafting it. Because one of the things I feel is possibly getting in our way of being more effective. Is trying to act like they do. Here's a finished draft. Now, would you please sponsor it? Go through your process of, you know, sending it to the planning and development committee. And let them muddle around with it, and then we'll have a joint public hearing. And, and I think there might just be more general understanding as well as comfort level with the council. If the sponsor or sponsors were involved earlier. So that's one possible suggestion. The other one I think has just flown out of my head. All right, I'll leave that. Oh, oh, the, something that we've talked about in the past and has really made me hot under the collar is. A land use, well, zoning amendment. That comes from a counselor and Jared was doing this for, I don't know how many of them over the years. Out of the clear blue, and we have no idea. That this is coming or have had no opportunity to even talk with them informally. And the only time we have an opportunity to provide input is at one of these massive joint public hearings. So that's another piece of the pie that I think needs to be. Well, not exactly streamlined, but discussed. That when they, I, I don't have any trouble with them initiating something, whether it comes directly from. One of them through a group of constituents who need relief. Or the Zach or wherever. But the fact that we get only an opportunity to provide input during the joint public hearing. Is really frustrating. So I just wanted to share that. I don't have an answer for it, but the first one was more of a suggestion for how we move forward when we want to propose something.
To follow up, Bonnie, I, I wonder whether there's a way to. Use the, I guess we don't use them, but for the planning and development committee to be. Earlier involved in the process. Typically, they don't look at things except if they're referred to them by the city council, and I don't know whether that is a, a requirement or not. But it would be great if, you know, if we're working on something and. We asked to be put on their agenda, discuss things with them, that gets three city counselors. Thinking about it right away, and one of those city counselors might be a potential sponsor.
Or they might say, oh, that's really in somebody else's area of interest. We'll go talk to them and bring them on board now that we understand what you're working on. Years ago, we worked very, we worked very informally with them. I don't know if that's been. Made more formal now, but. I don't think there's any problem with that to request.
Bored out by White-Fat West or something.
Yeah, but I think, you know, you're right. I mean, they, they could be a resource to us and, you know, it helps them to understand a little bit more about what we're working on. So. Maybe we'll try that with one of these topics that bubbles to the top by June. Good idea.
This is Andy. Can I add to that, actually? You might want to consider, we could talk to Council Shen, who's the current chair of that committee, but perhaps having some sort of overlap quarterly meeting or once, you know, twice a year meeting where. The committee and the planning board over, you know, have one night or a portion of the meeting that's devoted to discussing whatever regulatory issues that might be, you know, or require update or something. Just so that there's more, you know, everybody's in the same room, so to speak, in that discussion. Just a thought.
Yeah. Anyone else on the, want to jump in here? Okay, Andy, take it away with. Your latest headache.
Yeah. Plum Island Overlay District, sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that one.
So, yeah, so speaking of process, so there's been, there's this guy, there's been discussion about. Internally for a number of years and in different ways, has been discussion of the Plum Island area and the way that it's been developed over time. The issue that we're seeing is sea level rise is, is projected to increase and cause more flooding there. So I could flip and show you on the city's website, I could, you know, show you if you want to see where it is, but. There was a presentation that was given on the city's new resiliency, climate resiliency plan. Couple of weeks back, I guess, at this point. It's on the city's website. It has some slides and it, there's. A recording of it that's also posted. And then there's a copy of the resiliency plan that the committee developed over the period of a year or so. On the city's website. And in essence, one of the things that's brought up in that plan. Similar to an issue that we brought up in the master plan or the housing production plan or similar planning documents. Is the issue of sea level rise and the increased flooding that's going to happen. So. For those of you who may not know, we're actually constructing right now a revetment, we're finishing it up really. A revetment around the wastewater treatment facility because sea levels is going to be rising. It's going to have more impact on. Wave action. It's going to basically go over what was there before. So we're, we're raising that berm up essentially to protect the plant. And so. National Grid has taken some similar measures with stone, and they're going to have to make, as we will, we're, we're literally planning for right now. More protective measures beyond that, essentially walls in certain places to protect the plant. So it's understood to be an issue that we all need to plan for going forward. The problem. Is that our own land use regulations aren't necessarily consistent with best practices, if you will. And I know, Rick, you as a planner, you know, I know that sort of term is applied to land use regulations, but. In this instance, it's, you know, we have essentially what the maps are showing in the climate resiliency plan. And, you know, our city's engineering department and so forth is that. More areas are going to get inundated on the island on a regular basis in the years and decades to come, not less essentially. So there has been some erosion out there on the island recently, in particular behind the jetty. That, however, is related just to the. I want to say just to the jetty, but largely or substantially because of the jetty's construction. We, we think, but the, there are other places and the resiliency presentation shows some of this. There's erosion that happens routinely in different places across the island because it's a natural barrier beach that's expected to move back and forth. The jetty is actually only keeping a certain portion, you know, there essentially in place to provide navigation consistently to the channel. So, so, you know, the bottom line is that we, the island, you know, way back was sort of a resort type place. Got developed, carved out into, you know, hundreds of small tiny little lots. Long ago, and now we have, you know, a series of houses there. And that's, it works as a great neighborhood. It's a great, you know, place to live, but the problem is if we have more growth happening there, we're basically putting more. Public and private infrastructure in hazard way. And so there are good methods of dealing with that, like raising structures up. So for instance. We might give folks an exemption under height regulations because we want them to raise a structure up, right? So. If it's 35 feet and they need to get their house out of the flood zone, you know, give an extra allowance for that. To me, that would seem like a reasonable. Thing to look at in the regulations. We also have the possibility of limiting footprint expansions because we might not necessarily want ground level. Expansion of areas in the flood zone, for instance. So there are different things that need to be looked at on Plum Island, because we know that the conditions are going to get worse, which means that. The houses will get impacted and there are pictures in that presentation. Showing some of the, the situations we've got out there in the past and that we've have, we have most recently. But we have houses that are basically not nonusable, and part of that is because the sewer system. You can't just take out one house, the way it's set up right now, it's a vacuum system. So in essence, if there's four houses to six houses right now that are being discussed as, you know, having to be shut off or having issues with. Occupancy because of the erosion of safety. Then it's approximately 18, I was told that approximately 18 of those, the homes in that area would need to be shut off unless they put extra valves out there. So it's, it's because it's a complicated system. So the bottom line, I guess, is that. As a land, as a practical land use matter, if you look at the, if anybody familiar with the book Design with Nature by Ian McCarg. What we effectively need to recognize here is that there is essentially hours are going in opposite directions on the issue of best practices on the, on the island. So. I think what we want to do is allow people to renovate their homes, allow people to raise their structures out of the flood zone. But we might want to stop for a second and pause as to whether or not we allow horizontal expansions. Or if we add additional bedrooms or bathrooms. And the reason for that is because, and square footage is because the more people that are living out there. That actually means the more people will be living in hazards way in the future. So. Given that that puts more demand on the sewer system, which is already, you know, has these issues with. You know, area-wide shutdowns that could happen because of the inundation. It, it seems unwise to continue that pattern and. The Plum Island Overlay District was originally adopted with the agreement generally, conceptually with both communities. That there would be limits to the amount of growth that would happen on the island. And that was a general premise of the investment that the state put into that sewer system. That was part of the administrative consent order that was issued with the DEP. That was part of a, you know, contractual agreement between. The municipalities and, and particularly the city of Newbury Port, which provides the sewer and the state's Department of Environmental Protection. To make sure that there was limited growth happening on the island in the future, not, you know, substantial amount, they were very concerned about that. And in fact, what the regulations have allowed is a substantial amount of growth and the current provisions. Which were actually amended most recently, I think in 2011. Actually, there's a provision in there and again, I can pull that up as well for you. That provision actually allows things on the island to be done more quickly as a permit and more conveniently. Than on the mainland and that's misunderstood because I think a lot of folks recognize that there are some limits on the island. But in this case, if someone wants to expand right now, they, if they're making a new non conformance, something doesn't comply with zoning. They don't necessarily need a variance in that instance, and the mainland you would need that. On the island in the overlay district, it was amended in 2011 to make it more convenient to have expansions on the island. So you can actually do that by special permit, which means you don't need to demonstrate a hardship as long as you, you know, can demonstrate that the board, there's not impact on. The directed butters or nobody, nobody's next door is sort of has issues with it. You can get an approval without demonstrating a hardship, which is a much more difficult threshold legally. So the bottom line is that there's the regulations are essentially allowing substantial expansions of structures out there. And there are still a few, a couple smaller than a handful, maybe of unbuilt lots. That could potentially be built, but it's, it's all that, you know, communal cumulative development between both communities out there. That puts the strain on the system and the emergency crews that have to go out there. I would take a look at the illustrations in that presentation. Slide set, there's the P Fs are posted because it shows a lot of the the maps or some of the apps and the issues. By photographs of what's going on out there and the fact that those conditions and those images will happen more frequently. So in essence. It's a land use issue that needs to be addressed. My sense is that. We're going to have to have some more to Rick's point, maybe earlier. Some more public process and background and that sort of issue before there's another zoning change brought forward for anything like that. In the near term, I wouldn't expect, you know, the coming months to see anything on that. But there is a process that's going to be unfolding. Which I'll just mention, I think some of you who are interested in that might want to follow. The town of Newberry had applied to the state for a municipal vulnerability preparedness or M V P grant. They got $300,000. To pay consultants to have a couple of public meetings. Which are expected to happen this spring, essentially spring to summer timeframe, they're still trying to confirm the dates and timeframe. But one or two public meetings at least. To illustrate the the issues that are going to happen when sea level rise, you know, gets worse in coming years. And have a discussion about the fiscal impacts of that. That's not a project that we are leading, but Julia Godfordsen, the conservation agent and I are liaisons to this group. That are working directly for the town of Newbury, which got the grant. But the issue was to discuss the whole island, the island as a whole. So. The reason I mentioned that is because it's a discussion of the the sort of background. Behind why there is, there's a potential here of putting more development in hazards way based on what the engineers are telling us about. You know, future sea level rise. So, so that's why that Plum Island Overlay District essentially was proposed. That's why at some point I would expect that to be revisited. I'm not sure that's going to be this year, frankly. But, but it's a land use issue that needs to be addressed and I would suggest that folks who are interested in following that track, since there is not likely to be a zoning amendment. That folks instead follow the this. What's being referred to as the M V P. Study in Newbury of Plum Islands fiscal impacts of climate change. I realize that's a lot of information to take in at once. I know if you have any questions or, you know, thoughts, but. It's, it is, you know, as a land use issue, I have to say, you know, having worked here for a couple of years, knowing the different issues. That the city has, you know, across the table. I definitely think some, you know, I'd like to see some changes done for the Story Avenue, for instance, area. And we, we talked about different areas already about other areas of regulations we'd like to address. I do think is a long term sustainability issue and that's why it was, it came up as a consequence of the resiliency committee's work. It became apparent that our own land use regulations were inconsistent with essentially a policy document that we had brought forward. That was saying, you know, the situation's going to get worse, we should be looking at our regulatory structure to see what we can do to mitigate the the impacts of climate change. And so this is this stemmed out of that discussion essentially. And it, so that's why, you know, now or sometime in the future. It bears looking at that issue. It's the one land use issue I think that the city has that's. You know, we have a fair amount of open space preserved. Developed areas is a good amount of regulations that either are there or need to be modified, but. There's something in place to cover, I think, those substantial issues, but. This is a relatively new one because of all the science that's been coming out in recent years about. The projections in sea level rise and then. The storm surge and the wave action that happens because of that higher level, it pushes in further and then that wave, those waves go further. So, you know, I'll pull up a couple of images, you know, here for you, but that's in essence the the background. I don't know if you have any questions.
So I have a question. Was the. The city council. Actually councillors actually sponsored an amendment? Is that correct? And you're saying that's on hold now? Andy, are you there?
My apologies, I had muted myself.
I mean, what's, I thought there was an amendment already sponsored and that it's in process and. All that we've been reading in the newspaper and the resistance and so on is about that. Now you're saying. I don't know what you're saying about.
I was about to speak about it, accidentally muted myself. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Yeah, so last year I had spoken to councillor Connell about an amendment. But I had actually originally spoken to councillor Argamond about an amendment for Plum Island, given that these issues were already beginning to be known by the planning office and the engineering department. And the Conservation Commission. So I had mentioned to that time that was something we might want to look at in terms of regulatory changes. We initially had a conversation about it and there was some interest in sponsorship. That was. His initial willingness to sponsor it, he suggested perhaps I find another councillor, so. It just happened to be a coincidence that councillor Connell, who has an environmental background, had popped in my office, I think, the same day. And because that came up in conversation, he had expressed some interest in looking at that. And so. I had mentioned sometime last fall to the Ward One councillor that this would be probably coming along after the turn of the year, having discussed it with councillor Connell. And so the the essence was, you know, that we we might need to look at the regular change changes out there and see what we are allowing to grow out there. And so he had agreed to sponsor that. Then there was a, a question that came to me, you know, do we have it ready to go? Could we put in the council packet? This was a little bit later than the original timeframe, which was January and ended up being sort of February. And he agreed to sponsor it, it went into the packet. There, when it got to the council floor though, because during the period of time between it was put in the packet and for the council about a week. When the council gets their packet versus the night that they hold their meeting. The councillor Connell decided to pull that from the docket, he felt that that wasn't ready yet, you know, for the board to. Or for the council to send a committee, so it, the council wouldn't have been acting on it that night, but they would have been referring it to committee for discussion, whether you. Your 60 amendment has been referred to the playing board and city council for discussion, you know, to figure out, you know. Talk about the amendment, see what the issue is, see what needs to be changed. If there's agreement on it, recommend adoption, if not, recommend against it. So the assumption was that this would go to committee and there'd be discussion about the issues. And then whether or not something came out forward out of that, it would be from that public hearing that happened and all the discussion with it. That was pulled from the docket, so there is no formal process right now for any zoning amendment relative to Plum Island. I don't think based on what I know that there will be one, you know, this year. But I think that there will be some discussion primarily stemming from this M V P study and the consultant's work. About the sea level rise issue. So that will provide some context, I think. For if and when, if any point, there is any other change brought forward for Paul Island, which I would not expect in the near term. But I do think that this process is going to provide more background as to why. That sort of change was brought up in the first place, it's related to one that coincidentally ended up going in the same night by the Conservation Commission. That amends their regulations to deal with a similar issue of not having footprint expansions on the island. I don't know if there's any questions about that or. This is just a couple of snapshots from the. The presentation I would recommend if you want to take a look through it for a little bit more detail, but. You know, this is just one of those maps just showing the areas are going to get inundated in the future and so. Because the main turnpike is is obviously a key area, but we're also finding that other areas are going to get inundated in the future. We're concerned about putting more folks out there essentially is the question. So. The council can decide not to adopt the change and the planning working decide not to recommend it. You know, it could never be brought forward, but it's a land use issue that this coastal community. Should address the way that, you know, Boston and other places are because we have a substantial amount of coastline with now vulnerable. Structures or, you know, area, this is actually literally access to the island. For emergency crews, so this is going to get worse essentially for those folks and that's where this. Conceptually originated. That's, by the way, that's the the same house in that image there. That was from a. Maybe about 10 years ago, maybe nine, 10 years ago, that was the Newbury side. And we now have in the Newbury part side. We have, this is a plastic bags, essentially large plastic bags that were put out there to hold sand. To try to retain and protect those homes and it did its job, it was so called sacrificial. You know, it got thrown away into the ocean, but it protected the houses better. This is the situation, this is from a drone flying a drone that the Department of Public Services took, but some of these houses, the, you know, the fire department's been out there, they've been. Certain, some of them are not occupiable, but. This is happens on a regular basis on the island, it's not something that's unique to just the jetty or, you know, one, one time, it's, it's something that will go on. And unfortunately get worse in the coming years. So there's a question about how much infrastructure can we pay for and maintain out there? You know, there are no hard structures that can be built by state regulations out there. So we can't, you know, these blocks are historic, these concrete blocks weren't, weren't put in recently. But you can't put in permanent structures, so you can't put in a seawall or anything, so it's not like we have the ability to do that. So. When the house behind it, by the way, this is this photograph here, the the large houses you see at the front, at the back, there's a house there. Right behind it, that's the house that we're seeing now on this slide and, you know, so the sands going right into the windows and, and, you know, the. They have to basically say that these houses are not occupiable, right? So. The sewer department then has to shut off valves, the vacuum system valves for this street, let's say, whatever the area is involved and this ended up being about 18 houses that might be involved. In that one area, even though, let's say, only four houses are getting erosion right on the edge. So, you know, it's, it's a problem that we need to address, it's getting houses out of the flood zone, makes a lot of sense. But just to make a connection for you, the, these are the slides that were mentioned relative to Plum Island, so you have. You know, if you think about the shacks that used to be there, if any of you recall, you know, historically what was there. You know, the imagery, these are the larger houses that are out there now are being built out there and expanded into from those shacks. And so what you see on these next two slides is examples of that, that this one was referenced as an example of, you know, acceptable sized house in the hazard zones essentially on the island during permitting. This is something this C B A is dealing with on a regular basis. And then you have on the left here, an example of an existing shack that's out there and then the proposed house. You know, roughly double the size raised up, of course, out of the flood zone, which is good, but increasing size and more people living there. More flows to the sewer system that can be. And no space for cars at the bottom during the storm, so it like waterfront west, there was that question that was raised there. What happens to those, those people for access or for their vehicles? And then the, this one, it's a little hard to tell the scale, but if you can tell that the size of that little shack there on the left. What was approved as an expansion on the island is being acceptable and not detrimental to the district. And its potential issues is. Is a large house on the right there with a ramp. So what you're seeing is a ramp coming out of there, that's actually a two car wide ramp. To go into the house there, so this was permitted for that substantial structure going in there. So again, it's, it's good that we raise structures out of the hazards. It just may not be a good idea to substantially increase the size of those or add more residences out there. Beyond the number of residences that are already there, so.
Any questions for Andy on this topic?
I was just a little struck by the, the bags that were put on the beach and those are just, those are just left to just wash into the. Into the ocean.
That's a great question, actually.
Plastic, I mean.
Yeah, it's a great question.
That's okay.
You're 100% right, I would agree with you. There was, this has been a constant issue that the two municipalities have had to deal with. It does not always have the best outcome, as you can see here, as you've correctly pointed out. Both municipalities have talked to the Department of Environmental Protection about what they can either allow. You know, or permit. And they cannot allow hard structures, but they have on these occasions allowed things like these choir bags, which are more of a natural fabric. And they've also allowed, in this instance, they allowed these plastic, you know, fiber bags. They're, you know, largely like a tarp, you know, basically woven tarp. To be put in and you're right, they're shredded, they're, they're sending off into the into nature and.
I have a massive problem with that.
Yeah. That was not addressed at all. I don't know what plan there was to sort of clean that sort of stuff up, but it was assumed.
Protect one person's house.
Yeah, this, well, this was a couple, it was a couple of houses, but you're right. And there's, there's lots more houses on the island. So and the problem here is there's no elevation change really, so. They're trying to create a berm there to protect, but the problem is the island is so flat that as soon as it breaks that, you know, a few feet of elevation change with a storm. Including seal arrives is pretty bad because it allows the water to go way further inland. And that's what's happened here, why that second house was hit as well by the waters in the stand.
So Andy, can I just clarify procedurally where. The. Proposal is, is it before the. Is it being considered by the committee or is it just withdrawn? Newspaper people were saying it was, said it was. Sent to committee, but that's wrong.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, to be clear, that's, that maybe it was, I can see where the confusion is. So there were two amendments that came in that night to different regulations. And I just want to clarify the two and that's maybe where that question comes from. One of those was sent to committee, one of those was, is dead now. Because it did not move forward on the docket, it's, it was removed entirely. So that the one that was removed is the zoning one. That has been entirely removed. The only one that's left right now that went to committee is one that is for the Conservation Commission's regulations. And that speaks to the same parallel, exact same issue. Particularly about the the footprint of structures in the hazard zone. So it basically says, in essence. You can't have an increase in the amount of. Footprint of a structure within the hazard zones where FEMA already says your property is in a hazard zone. You can't expand your footprint in it because that seems illogical, right? So there's, there is the ability to raise structures, that's a different thing, but. This is intended to limit the amount of footprint at ground level that is clearly within the flood zone. So beyond that, I would have to defer to the conservation administrator or the commission about. You know, the origins of this and their their concerns, but it's addressing a similar issue, which is. How much more development do we allow in the hazard zones? But it's, that's the one that is still active before the council, it's the Conservation Commission's regulations.
Thank you.
Andy, this is Don. I was a bit confused when you mentioned. About the taxing of the municipal services, I think specifically. The wastewater, I would have thought that if the wastewater system. Was more or less maxed out right now on the island. That irrespective of zoning, you would not be allowed to. You know, increase the. The size of the building or bathrooms or water fixtures, et cetera.
So I don't, I'm not, I don't pretend to be the expert regarding the sewer system, but I have had a number of discussions over the years with the city sewer superintendent. He or he used to be the sewer distribution superintendent, now he's the deputy director of public services, great guy, Jamie Tucolo. So I've gained some knowledge of the system from him, but, you know, the, when the system was designed and the regulations were adopted for the island in the, in the first place, there was, there was a lot of. You know, concern about this growth issue at that time when this was happening. You know, that, that by putting a sewer system out there rather than having septic and, you know, wells was going to potentially make it much easier to develop the island, that's exactly what was being discussed at that time as a concern. The, the system out there, I think. Was designed essentially with the assumption that you, that each residence, I don't know how they did the calculation, but. I don't think that the capacity is necessarily issue, it's more about the number of homes that are attached when something has to get shut off. But they did design the system, I think, to assume that at least. One more bedroom per house could be added and that's what the regulations allow right now under zoning. You can add at least one additional bedroom from wherever you were at that time. But only one to a maximum of three bedrooms, that's basically what the regulations say right now. And so folks have been able to add their one bedroom if they can, you know, document that, you know, it's just the one being added or they're not over three. And so that sort of stuff has been added as well. I don't think, I don't, to my knowledge, that's not an issue for the. The sewer collection system, based on my understanding of it. Per se, because they sort of anticipated that and that's because folks had put these candy cane, if you will. And that's because folks had put these candy cane, if you will, you know, valve pits out there to make the connections to the applicable lots, you know, long ago. So they had accounted for what they thought would happen in terms of growth. So I'm, I guess the bottom line is they're not necessarily, they're not really keen on adding more people to that system, more bedrooms, knowing that the areas might, might more frequently need to be shut off during storms in zones. But, but they, I don't know that the number of bedrooms is the issue. It's more just the number of people that are, because each bedroom represents and bathroom represents another person or people living somewhere. That's how they're, how sewer flows are calculated gallons per day. That's why, from their perspective, it's unwise to add to the sewer system.
Thank you.
I have nothing further to add on this, there's other questions. I just wanted to make sure you were aware of that issue. And while I don't expect any change to be brought forward this year, you know, really, there will be some discussion that's worth, you know, tracking. I can give, provide an update to you at a future meeting about what happened during these public meetings or happening this spring through that project from Newbury. But it's going to be just about what will happen with the flooding. You know, I think the maps will be the most interesting to see.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to do a quick update on six C because it was sent to the Planning and Development Committee. They're having a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the details. I'll be planning to be there. Anyone else who wants to, you just joined from the city website. And then, Andy, have you officially scheduled the joint public hearing on that?
Yeah, so Diane and I have scheduled for the March twenty fifth date. We had to, it was difficult for us to try to find a date, as you can imagine. It works everybody, but we had to work to March twenty fifth date that I don't think has little conflicts. So that night, we're having what is expected to be a one hour. Councillor Shan would like to keep it to an hour, a meeting on the sixty zoning amendment. And so I will leave it to, to the chairs as to how that meeting is run. But I think if we provide an overview that night and then answer any questions about it, hopefully the council would agree that it makes sense to update the ordinance and bring that forward. But, but that will be March twenty fifth. And we have confirmed that with the Planning and Development Committee members and chair.
Okay, so that's a Thursday night. They were under constraints, time constraints because of when this was submitted and when the public hearing had to be held. And because we have a very full agenda on the seventeenth, I said this would not go on that night. So that's why we have a separate meeting scheduled for Thursday, March twenty fifth. I believe someone from the planning office will send out a request for attendance. We only need five people, a quorum. But I hope we can last two, five of us to show up that night. And thank you in advance for considering coming to that meeting.
Not to confuse, I've just highlighted on the screen here, the meeting tomorrow night from the city council. The item that they're looking at last is the six C, just to see if they have any discussion before they meet with you.
Okay, so I'm going to go to that. If anyone else wants to come, that's fine. It's six o'clock. They, they run it on their own. It is the last one, so we don't have to show up for a little while, you don't think?
I'll leave that to councillor Shan. Typically, I would imagine that she would take that one last, but I could be mistaken, you know, the appointment.
All right. I'll be there at six. Okay, great. So anyone who wants to come along tomorrow night, fine, but we will need five people for the twenty fifth. So. And I had one other question about another project I read about, Andy. Will there or what will be the role of the planning board in the planning and or permitting for the waterfront park project?
Yeah, thanks, Bonnie. Great question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, yeah, we haven't talked about that. I've been spending, in that particular project, I've spent so much time on the, the effort to get our architectural team, you know, our landscape architectural team picked and get the monies for design and so forth. So it took us a number of years just to get the dissolution of the redevelopment authority. So a fair amount of consensus is, is there right now for the area that needs to be expanded for the park and the area that's be, will remain for the parking. And some temporary space was put in there in two thousand and nineteen, that sort of phased approach. But the permanent park improvements are being designed this, over the course of this year schematically by a consultant team working for the city. We're just waiting for the council appropriation on Monday. But that firm will be Sasaki Associates. Some of you, I'm sure you, a number of you have heard their name. But they have a lot of experience with this sort of thing. They actually were involved with plans for the redevelopment of downtown decades ago. So at any rate, they were picked by, as out of fourteen firms that submitted proposals, there will be a schematic layout that will result from all that process that will have a schematic layout of the park and a cost estimate. So we have a good idea of what that will cost us to build that. The bottom line is to Bonnie's question, as we go forward in that process, I can keep you informed informally. But when we get to the point where there is something that's more definitive, we will need to come in for permitting, the typical site plan interview process, we, the city, as the applicant, because the city will need a site plan approval for the parking areas and so forth. So you'll see it, I would say, you know, comparable to say, when you saw the school projects or the senior center project, you know, years ago, when you saw those plans coming from permitting, you'll see the same type of permits, except that there won't really be buildings. The only small structure will be a bathroom visitor booth sort of structure to replace the temporary trailers that have been there for years. So if you have any other questions, let me know. But that's the essence of it. You'll, you'll have sort of the site plan interview aspect of that. And the Conservation Commission will have the permitting as well, just because of the distance to the river.
That's all I had. Does anybody else have anything they want to share or question? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'm like a motion to adjourn.
Leah, yes?
Yep, I'll second, this is Tanya.
Okay, second from Tanya. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
M J?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we are adjourned.